Good evening, welcome to the Eastline Board of Selectmen's Special Meeting for the Purpose of Budget Review, Eastline Town Hall, Upper Meeting Room. This is March 6th, 2024 at 5:00 PM. Rise. Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, which stands for our nation on the ground and is well with liberty and justice for all. Okay. So, we have a few things going on this evening, the first of which is the special meeting, and then that will be followed afterwards by a public meeting, a special town meeting, and our regular Board of Selectmen. We are in the special meeting right now. So, we're going to begin to our final pass through the budget. And so I guess we should begin at the beginning.
Now, are we going to be looking for individual motions or a total motion at the end of all of them?
I think in the past, we've done separate motions in sections where, you know, we've made changes.
All right.
So...
We can close it before we go through it?
I think that's what we should do. And make a note of what the change is going to be. And then, would it be wise to do the motion at that time or wait till the end? I think it'd probably be best to do this when we're through.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. So we're not trying to...
Yep.
All right, so we're not going to look at revenue because that will take care of itself, one way or the other. So our first section is the Section 101, the General Fund Budget, First Selectmen. Any discussion on that section? Any proposed reductions or changes? Pretty basic, yep. All right, if there's no comment here, then as everyone's had a chance to go through. Next one is the Assessors' Office, again, pretty straightforward. Four by four five, so they're doing a great job over there, so Section 102. Any comments or suggestions? Okay. On to the Tax Collector. Any reductions or changes, comments on Tax Collector, Section 103. All right, being done, we'll go to 104 Building. Let me know if there were...again, is there any commentary, any proposed reductions or changes? I hear none, so let's move forward. Town Engineer, which is also part of 105.
So any changes that you made, say, in just going back to building? It looks like you proposed $75,000 for like the building official. Just want to kind of...
Which one are we on?
So under 104 Building, it says 212 Building Official.
Yep.
Right, and if you go over...
And we'd already looked at those...
So that $75,000 is what then would control?
Right.
Okay, just want to confirm.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the column farther to the right right now, and then if there's any changes from the Board of Selectmen, that would show up in the next column.
Okay.
So just real quick. I don't know if your spreadsheet in front of you has the BOS adjustment column. It might just be the First Selectmen, the First Selectmen Budget. But as we go through, there's tabs that are, you know, hidden. So if, you know, if the board makes cuts, they'll be in the column out.
Got it.
This board.
Correct, yep, yep.
Okay. All right, so now we're up to 105, Town Engineer. Any concerns, comments, reductions? Human Resources, and that's Section 106.
Yeah, I guess on Department 106, Human Resources, I would move for Human Resources to reduce line item 412, the HR Assistant, by $11,225 to a total of $38,773. This basically changes it to 28 hours per week.
Okay, so that's line 412. Section 106, line 412.
Department 106, item 412, yeah.
What's the impact going to be on that?
So it's going to be 28 hours per week, so it would be part-time.
I understand. No, I understand it's going down, but I'm asking about the actual impact to the department by you do, by us doing that.
I just think it's a brand-new department, and I think that they can probably manage with part-time instead of full-time.
Dan, do you want me to just jump in there for a second?
Yeah.
So we currently have a part-time HR administrative assistant in that position. She works roughly 16 to 25 hours a week, so the idea was to make this position full-time, but, you know, as the budget started getting hashed out, we realized the part-time admin is sufficient, but if we increase it to 28 hours to get her in four days a week, seven hours a day, the position wouldn't be benefited, but we'd still get more services for the HR office.
So it's going to be 28...
So it wouldn't be benefited, so she wouldn't be getting benefits, or this person wouldn't be getting benefits?
Correct, correct.
But you'd be getting more out of them?
They would work, they would work under the full-time threshold. The full-time allotment is 30 hours.
Okay, so that changes from the First Selectmen proposal that goes from 49 to what?
Um, no. Down to $38,773.
So 38...
$38,773.
Okay, so that's a reduction of how much?
$11,225.
Okay.
Okay, so now, under our column, Mr. First Selectmen, you had proposed the $49,000.
Yes.
And so you're comfortable with this?
You know, I think if we can achieve some economies by, you know, keeping it in a benefited position, at least for this, get through this year, and see how the demand goes, and see how they cope with that staffing level, I think that would be wise, and then we can always revisit it next year.
May I ask a question? Is the position benefited right now? No. So this person doesn't already have benefits that are going to be taken away?
Correct, correct, yep. In our...
Good question.
Yeah, no one in this, on the town side budget is losing benefits in the entire, in the entire budget.
How long is the person there with us?
About a year-ish.
I think so, because we talked about this at last year's budget.
Yeah, correct, yeah.
So...
It's been, yeah, I'd like to say maybe right around a year.
So it's currently a part-time position, and it would increase her hours.
It would, it would increase them to about a considerable 20%.
Yeah, which would be a benefit to this individual insurer. And then we'll see how it goes and see, see what we can do, see how it looks next year, see where our budget looks, see what the demand is for those services.
Okay.
Do I hear any further discussion? All right, do I hear a second on this change?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. All right, if there's no further discussion, all in favor of this change signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, so that do...
No, but that changes the bottom line.
It will, and we'll accumulate that in the...
And when we come to Department 114, there'll be savings there as well. I'll pull up the spreadsheet for health insurance, and we can change that as well.
You'll be able to track that as soon as we get to the...
I have it, it's broken out, we can change it when, as we, as we go through the departments.
You go through some of the other ones.
Yeah, I think the last part we should do is 114, the general government.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the bottom line on this is not going to be 137, it's now going to be 128?
126, 123. Just check my math here. Excel, the formula, there's only one, one broken cell away from being wrong. It looks right, okay.
126?
126, 123.
123.
Thank you.
Yep, we bet, all right. So the next one is the Town Clerk, Department 107. Any suggested changes, reductions, or other changes? Hearing done, we will move on to 108, Section 108.
Well, this isn't, this coming year is, for this, for the 2025, that's going to be a statewide election, right? Because we just had local election.
This year statewide, so next year we're going to...
Okay, this, so 2025 will be...
Yeah, 2024 will be the big...
The big shaman.
Yep.
So then, the overtime account is going to $1,806 from $750.
And that's projected to cover that, right?
It's 140% increase.
It says they're having the presidential election in this fiscal year.
Right, so my thought was that they projected that much to cover, right? And then if there's, if there's money left over, does it stay in that line, or do we move it? How does that work?
If there's money left over at the end of the year, it goes back into the general fund, fund balance, but say we're, you know, the election's in November, so after November, if there's any money left there, it can be transferred to other, other lines with, you know, pressing needs and...
Just in this department.
It could, you know, townwide.
Oh, okay.
It all needs, you know, it has to be voted on, obviously, by the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance if it leaves the Town Clerk's department.
Understood, okay, got it.
So now that increase would cover, and I'm just assuming, that's why I'm saying it out loud, and you can tell me yes or no.
If it's elections in November, fiscal year is June, so...
But that projected would cover, you know, people that are working the polls, increased in curate?
That's, that, that 1,800 is just for the Town Clerk's office.
Okay.
If we...
To make, to process?
Correct, yeah.
Otherwise, it go to the registrars.
Yeah, if we do, yeah.
Yeah, I just want to get delineated, okay.
Yeah, I, I, they do something, I don't know if it's early absentee ballots or one of those, you know, technical things come out of this office.
Well, that makes a lot of sense, actually, yeah.
Especially now.
I think this is to cover, because I think they have to be open until 8 o'clock for like two weeks, if I'm not mistaken, so I think this is to cover some of the overtime just to stay open the other three hours.
I see, okay.
We good with that? Okay? All right. Is Ann, you okay?
No.
All right. Next is Ledzlin Health District. Not too much controversy here.
Is that health?
Okay, Information Technology, we had a lot of discussion before. Are there any proposed changes?
We had talked about the new IT engineer, and we had agreed that that figure would be reduced to indicate that the person would start later in November.
November 1st.
And that's reflected, right, and that's the...
The $48,250, right? I think that's...
That's, that reflects that, yeah.
That's what I had written down from our...
Yep.
And then we have the big jump for the other IT services in town. That's a really big jump. Are we comfortable with that?
So the, the other IT service line, they absorbed a $23,000 telephone line from building maintenance.
So that's why that went...
Correct, I think there was, there's a couple thousand dollars of increases there, but the majority of that was the absorption of the telephones from building maintenance.
For $28,000?
$23,000.
$23,000, townwide.
Isn't that also, and just correct me if I'm wrong, because I think the way that he described it was 40, 40 to 1 ratio, and that, right, and it...
The ideal staffing rules.
Or 90 to 1, right? It should be a 40 to 1, and we're currently at a 91, 92, 1 ratio. So, you know, maybe when he came, I think that when he had spoken the impact on our town, I don't think people realized that it is townwide and how multifaceted it really is. So I understand the increase, to be honest with you.
Yep. And I thought you did a nice job of explaining it to us, but, so, all right, so we okay with IT as it sits now? We good? All right. All right, 110, and that's the registrars. So, again, it's an election year.
I think that's why the election day expenses went up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
57.87% in referendum.
I don't see any changes, anybody want, changes there? I think that's right. Okay, probate judge? All right. I guess. Maintenance, now, Section 113. And we're going to, what's that, oh, yeah, I did, yeah. I think I did, I covered, I think, judge of...
Judge of probate.
Yeah, judge of probate. What did I do?
I thought you did it.
I did, I thought you did, yeah. We got the probate.
You said it.
Yep.
I think there was much.
No. Okay. Maintenance of town buildings, we had some discussion there, that line item that was moved to IT, we just talked about that in IT, yeah.
And under Utilities, Water and Sewer, it said he negotiated a better contract, so that went down.
Yeah.
Which is good.
Yep.
We had talked about line 295.
Which one, 2?
295.
Fire protection. 200 Services, the 295.
Oh, okay, yes, yes. That was the fire protection, yep.
I think we had a discussion of potentially moving it to another budget.
Yes, I had asked for it to be moved for next, next year.
Oh, next year, okay.
Well, I mean, unless you want to move it this year, I'll be perfectly happy with that, that's fine. I just wasn't too sure if it was...
Where would we move it to, to?
Anything, fire?
Yeah, Eastline Fire. So I did move, after we had that conversation, I did move it, so it would need to get voted on if we, if you guys want to move it.
Oh, good, so we can move it now.
I did, I moved it. I, well, I moved it pending, you know, a vote by, you know, the board.
Or we'll need a motion.
So, wait, can somebody explain what that means, actually?
So, the town, the Water and Sewer responsible for maintaining the hydrants as part of, you know, the water system.
Okay.
And I know you're back there, Joe.
Yes.
So if you'd like to jump in. But, but, so the town has to pay to maintain the hydrants, there's a fee for every hydrant. I believe there's 800 of them, 800 of them in town? I'm usually, we just dealt with this not that long ago. I figured I'd let him, let him speak to it.
Thanks, Joe.
Yeah, there's 820 hydrants. It's not just maintaining the hydrants, it's providing fire protection for the town. There's 820, so every time there's anything on, or anyone's fire insurance for their home, there's, there's a water system backing up, and the Water Department is completely a separate enterprise, this funds nothing, so we provide a system. A lot of our mains are bigger because of the fire protection in town. So in a lot of the communities, this costs us a lot more. This is a big topic discussion at the Water and Sewer Commission, that the chair is right there for the Water and Sewer, so that's what it is, and that's, I do appreciate it going to the fire services, because it's confusing when it's in building maintenance. It has nothing to do with building mains, it's not sprinklers, it's for the fire protection of the town.
Right. So I'm still confused, when you say fire protection, so that is making sure there's water going to the hydrants? Is that what that means?
Correct, so if a fire, God bless, I mean, if anything ever happens in village or any of those things, the fire trucks go rolling up, and they have an ability to hook up to a hydrant and use unlimited water with its nothing metered, it's all there to protect the town.
And that's something Water and Sewer does?
Yes.
Okay, so you're saying, take it out of this and put it in...
Well, yeah, there's two things. There was a question of what it was, that's what it is, it's about fire protection. It's not just about maintaining the hydrants itself, that's an element of it, that they work and that they're properly maintained, but just in general, providing the fire services. But by taking it out of, by having it in building maintenance, there's kind of some perception that's something to do with town buildings, it has nothing, it is a fire protection emergency services, fire department item, and that's why it really should be over there, because then it would be true, the fire department's the one that uses them, they come up and they hook up all their hoses to fight fires with them, but it's in building maintenance.
Sort of a misnomer, having it...
It's always been there, it's one of those, it's always been sitting there, but sometimes it's, sometimes it's nice, better to actually put it where it's supposed to be.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's almost $70,000.
How would this affect the overall reshaping of the fire departments in Eastline?
It has nothing, it's, it's more, it's more paying the Water Department to actually provide that, it really has nothing to do with the services of the fire department. You know, the management of the fire department's all about the Water Department providing ample water and pressure to, to fight fires in the town.
I just want to make sure, because I understand there's very kind of careful deliberations and negotiations going on right now with the town and the fire services, so this wouldn't, transitioning this would not complicate those.
It's apples and oranges, it has nothing to do with it.
But worthwhile question and concern, I appreciate that.
Well, why, why wouldn't this go to Water and Sewer then?
Water and Sewer does the service, the town has to pay Water and Sewer for the service.
Water and Sewer provides the service.
So the charge would go to the fire department?
Correct.
Should be in their budget.
Who pays the charge, that's right, thank you.
Should be in there.
Oh, I understand what you're saying, okay, all right, yeah, that's what, yeah.
So this total now...
So throughout the dinner, who's going to pick up the tab?
Yeah, no, I, I understand.
You know, we got restaurants coming up, it's a good...
Exactly. So the $69,000 is now going to appear, should be taken out of this budget, and is now going to appear...
In the other one.
Which is...
In Eastline Fire Service.
Yeah.
So we should have a motion?
Yeah, I'm just trying to...
Candace, do you want to make the motion?
I would like to make the motion to remove or move, I don't know what to actually say for this.
Did you say transfer, maybe?
Yeah, transfer.
Okay, I'd like to motion to transfer the fire protection town line item 295 to the Eastline Fire Services.
Okay, a second then. We have a second.
I would just say, under the maintenance of town buildings, so we know that it's underneath the maintenance of town buildings now, and it's transferring over then to the, what is it? 225.
Fire Service.
Public Safety, Eastline Fire Service.
Eastline Fire Services, yeah.
Okay.
Second, as amended.
As amended.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we're pretty clear on it. Any further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Well, now is our bottom line, our bottom line...
Minus the 69, so you'll have to give us the total number.
Okay, so should that, so should the motion reflect what the new figure is?
Yeah.
I don't think, I don't think that's a reflective figure, it's going to, it's going to populate down.
It's, it's a, it's a wash at the end of the day.
Right.
Oh, because it shows, because, right.
He'll adjust it, yes.
In there, yeah, he'll just transfer.
And there it goes.
You've got the Excel, you can do it.
Okay.
Okay, so I just had one other question on that, and then I have custodian weekend with library and Parks and Rec and maintenance, and I wasn't sure what happened with that, and I just have a big question mark next to it.
I'm actually glad that she brought that up, because that was brought up.
Yeah.
And it was spoken to where the whole amount comes out of one budget, but three share it.
Yeah.
So, wouldn't it realistically be better for it to reflect a quarter out of each...
Or third.
Or a third out of each budget that uses it, instead of the whole amount coming out of his?
Which, which line item are you thinking of?
Line 314.
314.
Overtime line, for $22,000.
That was just something we discussed, so that's why...
So I think in this budget, and maybe Joe could speak more to it, I think this covers all of the overtime? Am I, am I correct there? For the 22? I don't remember off the top of my head.
You're on tape.
Yes, so in the current budget, we tried to do that, and the Board of Selectmen last year cut it by $9,000, so the First Selectmen kind of negotiated an agreement in this current year, where we split the town, this building maintenance budget was picking up a third, the library, which is a tenant of that building, is picking up a third, and Mr. Lockenwood, Parks and Rec was picking up a third through their activity fund, that's how we're getting through this year. We're back now reverting that the full amount is on this building maintenance budget, but we did talk about that, that's how, what was going on this year, and...
What's better? What, what would you like to see?
It's difficult, because there's activities, so the senior services and Parks and Rec schedule activities on the weekend, so it's all depend what the Board of Selectmen, do you want to subsidize all those activities? There's a cost of doing business to have it. You used to be on the Board of Ed.
Oh, yeah.
If someone wants to use the Board of Ed on the weekend, they don't do it for free, they pay. But now, they still pay their $2 for their class or whatever, and so we're subsidizing that, but people, it's very popular to the public to have these activities on the weekends. That's for the senior services and the Parks and Rec. As far as the library, you know, the library is, they're not a department of the, they're kind, they're, they're independent, they, they're a tenant of the building, and they, they've taken the tax since COVID, that it's not their responsibility to be cleaning and doing all the other stuff, but they want to be open, so that, that is the dilemma. I, I, I always was provide whatever services you can, the problem is, it's coming out of my budget, and I can't proceed in a fashion when it was cut, and in good faith, continue to provide the service when it was cut. That's why I brought it to the First Selectmen's Attention and Director of Finance, so that's why we negotiate. So however it's funded, it doesn't matter, but it's being used by activities, and the library is a tenant, so I thought the third, third, third was a pretty fair...
I think for traceability, I agree with you.
Is it back in then as a full...
It's, 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 right now, is, is in front of you right now, it's completely 100% funded by this budget.
And...
By under maintenance of town buildings?
It's under, I, I don't have my thing in front of me, it's in the OT line.
And is that sufficient?
The OT line?
Line 314.
Wait, oh, I see it now, okay.
This year, the amended budget is 12,000 right now, and we're proposing 22, and the difference is that, that what was cut from last year in this process, it's not like I'm raising the budget, it was put in to try to fund it last year, and this board decided to cut it, and now we're sitting in right in front of, with the same question.
Yeah.
That just has to be answered.
Well, so, let me, I don't want to interrupt.
Yeah, I was going to say that I think it just needs to be in there, I mean, if that's, because...
You...
Hold on, go ahead.
No, you go, I'm good. So, let me, is my understanding correct, that with the 22,000 in there, that would allow us to take on the weekends and doing the janitorial service?
Yes, correct.
Out of his budget.
Out of this budget.
Out of this budget, eight hours on Saturdays, four on Sundays.
And the ones that benefit from it, first of all, the, the library service is independent, we have no control over their budget or what they decide to do. They have their own board.
But I think that that might be key, that you're saying that, because it's kind of sticking to my bones at the moment, because if you're independent and you have your own budget, then essentially you should be paying for your cleanup when you have certain services going on.
Now, the library's open 9 to 4 on Saturdays and 1 to 4 on Sundays. The senior center, they don't really have any activities going on, on the weekends.
Incorrect.
No, yeah, I think, yeah.
Yeah.
They do, they do have, they do have programs going on.
Jerry would know.
They do.
Mr. Lockenwood, so any activities would probably be scheduled through Parks and Rec office, because doesn't your person schedule that room? So I it gets back to public works director Billy Maynes. I have no idea what the scheduling is. I'm just being told to clean it. So but I have to have the funds to clean it. And that's where so that's where we're at right now.
My my concern is that we're going to end up in the same place we did last year. We're going to run out of money. And then we're going to have to and their board may say, no, we're not going to fund it. And then we're going to have to make the decision while we close down the access to the library on the weekends because we can't and I I think that's really a disservice to the town. I wish they would they would contribute to it. But if if we have no control over it, I think we have a duty to keep access to that building open. And you need to have an adequate fund on that line item to do just that. That's my feeling on it.
Is twenty two thousand adequate?
Yeah.
That covers it then?
Yeah, that. Yeah, correct.
The library is independent, but it provides a major community service.
Agreed.
That nobody no other agency provides. And we're fortunate that they do fund that because in many other communities, it is not independent. We could end up picking up. I mean, either the library is closed or
Yeah.
Call we provide overtime. And I that includes paying for the cleaning materials as well.
What's that?
That includes paying for the materials that are needed for the cleanup.
That's a separate line.
Yeah.
Custodial supplies. This is solely labor.
Yeah.
And that that's a very big building. And during the week, as everyone's aware, the amount of program that's going on, the the true word of a custodian over there is not necessarily they're running around moving chairs and they're they're like cruise directors over there. So it's 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 the weekend, that Saturday and Sunday offers them an opportunity when to really clean that building properly because during the week, the custodian is just moving stuff around. Moving chairs around and moving tables around and doing all that other stuff.
Well, it is becoming very difficult for the one time custodian to be the only person there and trying to do the cleanup for four different activities that are going on simultaneously. And everybody leaves. And then there's one custodian left to try to get particularly on a Sunday to try to get that whole complex cleaned up and set up for Monday morning.
Who pays for the custodian over there? Who pays for the custodian over there? That's that we do.
That's what we do. We do.
So we are paying. I'm having trouble because if it's an independent and they run their show and they have a budget, why are we paying for it?
Because all of the activities are not held within the library itself. They are using the community aging builders as well.
Have you ever had a joint conversation with the library board to come to a partnership maybe?
Well, that's what I did last year. And I jumped in.
How did that go? You went what?
And I and I was able to negotiate taking out a third and a third and a third. But again, we could end up in the same situation where they don't agree to do it. And then we're going to have to try to, you know, negotiate again with them. I just think for the amount
I won't die on the hill on this one. It's okay. But I just it's sticking to me that it's just not right. It literally shouldn't be in there, but there's really no room about it. And it is what it is.
But we have a duty and I think we have to make it.
It's interesting.
There is one thing I just want to clarify. That's it's like the eight to four, as you mentioned, the hours on Saturday and the four hours on Sunday. If there's a dance or there's some activity outside of that, this doesn't cover that. That whatever that event has to, I just want to be perfectly clear. Like if there's an event that goes on, you know, from eight to eleven thirty at night, that event, in our opinion, has to be paid by the cost of the event. Because that will throw off those numbers if they have. Because I know they like to have swim dances and other dances and other things.
There's a charge for that then?
I would hope so. That's through Public Parks Parks and Rec. I would hope that their charge would cover the fact of having that event because that's not covered in this OT.
But this is for the standard use.
Standard day.
Keeping it open so the public can have access to it.
Correct.
And there won't be any question that fifty two weeks a year they're available.
Yeah, and there I want it's there's a certain summer. I don't have it in front of me, but there's certain days and I think Sundays in the summer that aren't open. Whatever the library that the library is not open, that so that's already incorporated. It's not fifty two weeks. It's whatever they're open.
They have a summer program.
I talked to them about their schedule. They said this is how many weeks a year they need it open on Sundays. This is how many weeks on Saturday. And that's what that number reflects. So it's not like we're padding that number. And then all of a sudden, oh, wait, it's not open in the summer. That's already factored in.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I just feel at some level for the landlord and there's common areas, we have a responsibility to, at least to the extent that we maintain those common areas. I feel this is somewhat part of that. So I don't know. I'd be in favor of keeping it in. Any further discussion? All right, then we'll we'll keep going. We're going to skip one fourteen to the very end. Come back to that. Does that change depending on other changes we made? One fifteen is services to the community. We talked about that last night quite a bit.
Okay, so I just want to bring something up. And I don't know if people will agree or not. But I just want to throw it out there. So the way I'm kind of looking at this is these services right here are all five oh one C threes. And my concern is that when we're funding them, we're we're giving donations. So we're actually taking taxpayer money and making donations. And my concern is, are we really sure that that's what the taxpayer would want to do? That maybe the taxpayers like I personally make my own donations to different organizations that I have an affinity with. And so that's just, you know, I've been thinking and thinking about it. And, you know, I'm not saying these aren't great causes, but it's just causes me a little concern that that the town is compelling taxpayers to make donations to these organizations. And I don't know what other people think. I'm just kind of throwing it out there just to, you know, see what people think.
I would say yes. That's my short answer.
Yes, too.
Yes, to the fact that we should be using taxpayer money to provide certain niche organizations to provide services that we as a town can't necessarily effectively handle. Take the Blue Door, for example. Rena Powers runs single handedly, well, not single handedly. She has a board, but collecting and distributing medical supplies to people who need them.
For free.
Yes, as as a, you know, leader of the town, I understand that there's a tremendous number of people in this town who benefit greatly from that service, whose lives would be greatly impacted if we were to decide that we were uncomfortable helping out. I myself have not needed anything from her. I am a taxpayer and but I fully understand that we're using our combined resources for the good of all the community. So I think that's an effective way to use tax dollars.
Interesting one that you picked out because they are providing a service as a community service, providing equipment that we would be asked through Commission on Aging to help our residents with those particular services. And now we have a volunteer program that's doing that and managing it at essentially no cost to us. And they, I mean, they they have a warehouse, literally, of materials that are donated and available for our particularly, not only just elderly population, but people who have medical needs. So it seems to me the twenty five hundred dollars is a bargain.
And I would also like to add that I do understand your trepidation because these are run by people who are not necessarily elected by the general public and they're in receipt of public funds. But I think that these really do kind of operate in a in a middle ground effectively and efficiently. And we should we should continue to support them unless given reason otherwise.
So Roseanne, I know you've been on this board for forty, fifty years. I'm not sure exactly.
Let's not count.
So I guess my question to you is, do you remember how this all started?
Yes, because in many cases, it was better for us to make these donations to many of these organizations to provide a service at a minimal cost to us, which in fact, if we didn't have these, we would have to be paying somebody to do it.
Okay.
Now, we could go through these. I mean, there might be different arguments for 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 each of these. We could go through each of these. But let's just take nine eleven, the East Lime Historic Cemeteries. This board is required by state law. Cemeteries are our responsibility. And yet, we don't hire anybody to do that. These are all volunteers that take care of this for thirty five hundred dollars. We have seventeen historic cemeteries in this town. Can you imagine if we didn't give them this small amount of money, what it would cost our public works department to manage those and take those? Now, some of these have been added, you know, over time. There's always requests that come in. I think these two new ones on the bottom, these are new additions. Perhaps those would be two that we might want to discuss. Brian Dagel Foundation was added a couple of years ago. Dump nine twenty five, the veterans rep, we're required, we're required to provide that kind of assistance through the through the State Department. And yet, there's no other place in the budget for that. And this, our veterans rep travels around the state on behalf of our veterans. So to me, it seems if we want to pick out and ask for justification on each one of these, we could. But I don't I I agree in part that some of these aren't ones that I would particularly support, you know, as an individual. But as a member of this community and the community as a whole, what do we stand for? We're supposed to be providing services to our community. And to me, this is a small, small amount to pay. Maybe some of the newer ones, we could take a closer look at. But or maybe some of these end up in another place in the budget.
Well, that that's why I kind of brought it up, kind of a little nervously because I wanted to know, you know, I've been kind of thinking about this and and I wanted to understand the history behind it. And I think your explanation is clear. And it makes me feel more at ease.
Do you mind if I chime in?
Sure.
Of course.
I think that Anne prompted a pretty good question there, to be honest with you. And my questions revolve around how do you make the list? How what is the process of being chosen to be on this list to services to community?
Letters. Letters should be written to the board.
Mm hmm.
As, yes, asking for support. And we don't have all of those letters here in our document, but many of them are there. Many but somewhere in the records, there should have been a request letter filed on file for each of these. Now, some of those that are longstanding, we don't ask for a letter every year, a formal letter. But most of them do turn in a request. I know the East Lime Cemeteries, they turn in a request each year. We don't we have in the past, we haven't looked at those budgets individually as they've been approved. And we've kept them on the list. And as I said, I have no objection to perhaps next year, going through each of these if we want to and see if they're appropriate. But I think at this point in the budget process, to try to go through and eliminate certain ones and keep certain ones or ditch the whole thing, I think we're kind of late in the process to do that. Except for, I would say, perhaps since this board has been here, the more recent requests, such as the police cadets, the youth coalition. I don't remember about Southeastern Connecticut Cultural Coalition. I think, do you do you remember that when we were talking about, you know, what do I want to say? Regional Support Score? When that that came in, I think maybe that was an emphasis of the
Part of that.
Is that part of it? I think that but it came up during that discussion.
Well, the truth is, is I certainly support each and every one that that's on the list. And I support it because it's an investment within our community. I think it's worth, you know, investing that money. I do think that it's a small amount, but I do think that that was a very great question for her to ask, you know, publicly and on behalf of our taxpayers because there may be some taxpayers that really are not wanting to do that. So maybe next year, we'll have some more discussion on it, give the opportunity for for community members to hear why we do this maybe. And give the opportunity to to come in and and have dialogue about it, whether or not yea or nay. Because I I think Anne raised a very good question.
I'm a hundred percent agree because a lot of these things I donate to, I'm not going to mention anybody specific who I donate to or who I choose not to donate to. But now that she brought it up, I'm I'm thinking to myself, I don't want to donate there. They don't need cash. But they're getting an automatic check versus the renewal letter or something doing financials. And it's taxpayer dollars. And or the taxpayers, I want to add this this company or this this organization. The list will get longer. It's not going to get shorter. And we are here to, we're we're low on cash. So we're here to to help trim the budget, to cut it back where we can. And I thought, I appreciate you bringing it up too. And Roseanne, great explanation.
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, on the other side, good job. But
What about our two recent ones that were just requested this year? Why don't we look at those two? Because this is budget time. And it might be, maybe we should start there as a starting point. And then next year, early on in the budget, we take a closer look at some of these other things that we donate to.
What is the veterans' budget reimbursement?
The IRS average, whatever the IRS rate is, sixty two, sixty three cents.
That's really important service.
Yeah, it is.
I don't know. Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, so there's an individual that is the veterans' rep. And, you know, these veterans that need to get down to Bridgeport, where the Veterans Hospital is, or
Culture.
New England.
I was long as long as
Worked for famous
He takes them to the outpatient.
No, perfect. We're moving patients. Okay, that's fine. I got you. Not the road to a seminar, I mean, or a big
No, this is real. You know, when the rubber hits the road.
Good job.
Gets these people where they would otherwise be able to go.
Yes. And there again, this is a service that, I mean, essentially, this person is a volunteer.
Right.
And your efficiency note is very good too, Roseanne, versus a lot cheaper to do this route versus
Agreed.
Yeah.
And, you know, and I'm really glad you asked the question. So it raises this discussion. And but and, you know, the responses of everyone were really enlightening. I think this probably started off at some point with one or two items. And as things changed in town and had and the importance of different, you know, ideas in society changed, elements got added to this. Where a need was recognized, we said, geez, the town really can't do it. But there's a group out here that's willing to take this on. Maybe we can help them a little bit. And I think that's how it grew. And I don't think it was all at once. There was this whole list. I think it was one by one and evolved. And it's it's a service that really helps the town out. It helps the people that live here. And I think the intentions were good. I don't think there's anything objectionable from a, you know, we're not promoting a political agenda or a religious agenda. It's all pretty neutral things that people need.
Now, is there a policy that goes along with it and a process? And the only reason I'm asking is because you've noted that the the list has grown larger, right? And it could grow considerably larger. So are there any parameters or guidelines that have been created on this? And if not, maybe there should be.
In the past, this has been a letter, a request letter that's been submitted to the town and then come to the board. And the board has voted on these over time for each item. In some cases, these are services that were offered. And either that that company, so to speak, went out of business and then we were left with no other means to support to support the program. I'm looking for, let's see, oh, the home nine oh six, the homeless shelter. That's a regional group. By contributing them, we don't have to offer, we don't have to have our own. So this is a regional contribution. Now, I'm assuming that's voluntary. Family Service Association, that was because the existing agency which handled family services, I've forgotten what that was called, that became defunct. So I think all of these have a bit of history. And I agree that some of these have been added more recently. I think if I think it would be appropriate to look at the two that are requested this year. This is our budget year. Let's start there. And look at those two items, nine thirty four and nine thirty five, and see if we would like to support those in this budget. And if not, then we
I believe it's actually three items. Kevin, would you speak to that?
Correct. So last night when we talked, I gave everyone the heads up. There was there was a difference. So the difference was the backup work papers you have does not have pollinators in pathways. But the front work paper did. So that some the operating expenditure work paper on the front that looks just like this, it had pollinators and pathways at the bottom. But the detail sheet did not. So we had it in the budget on one side, but not in the detail sheet. So it was the youth coalition scholarship, the East Lime Police Cadets, and the pollinators and pathways.
Right. So fifteen hundred for pathways.
Correct.
Is being
So we're talking about a matter of less than seven thousand dollars.
It is six thousand dollars.
I believe
I'm confused. So
Oh, okay. Yeah, you're right.
So I'm I'm sorry. You kind of lost me there. So you're saying you're adding something else to pollinators and pathways?
It was it's in the it's in the front work paper. It's just not in the detail sheet you're looking at right now.
Okay. So does the number here, the proposed number from the first selectman Okay, so does the number here, the proposed number from the first selectmen change then, based on that?
So it, it did change. So there's, there's two different changes there. The first one was the EL beautification, seventeen hundred dollars was cut.
Because of Main Street.
Because of Main Street.
And that went down to?
Oh, I thought it gets on my email.
Well, just shift it over to Main, Main Street.
Yeah, because Main Street still gets correct.
Oh, okay, I understand now, I got it, okay.
And the idea was there. When the gentleman from the EL beautification came into my office to tell me that he was not doing it anymore, he mentioned there was, I believe, six or seven thousand dollars in the bank account. And I said, oh, okay, so we've kind of built this up a little bit. So, I think they're okay for, you know, a year or two.
Kevin, really quickly, I have the Giving Garden on the first page as nine twenty-three, number nine twenty-three, and it's twenty-five hundred dollars. And then on the second page, I've got the Giving Garden, nine twenty-one, number nine twenty-one, at thirty-two hundred dollars.
Giving Garden, nine twenty-one, Food Door.
This is the, when in doubt, if there's discrepancies between the two pages, because I have to reconcile between the two of them. This spreadsheet is what we use to create the budget.
Okay.
So it's all, this, this is the master spreadsheet. So I always, this is, this is where all the numbers are derived from.
Going back to last thing, not, can I say last thing? But what Candace said, I, I think we make it a little bit like a grant or a scholarship application. So just some accountability as to where it is, I think that'd help a whole lot.
Yeah, I think parameters over all of this. Maybe even we meet before the budget season begins and we put together a package of what goes into the budget.
I think for this year, I think, you know, we, they're not here to speak on their own behalf, these services.
Yes.
But the, in the future, you know, maybe even during the year, we can pick a few of these. And if it's a slow night for the Board of Selectmen, they can just give us, make a little presentation of, you know, get, pick three at a time and tell us a little bit about what they do.
Yeah, I'm definitely not in favor of cutting anything out of the budget. But I am looking for, I'm, was on the Board of Ed for a long time, so I am, you know, forgive me for being policy-driven, but I do think that that would be very good in this situation.
Have a process and a policy.
To have a process.
We can work on that.
And I also think if they did present, then you would get to know who they are. Do you know what I mean? I think that's important for them to know us and, you know.
Yes.
Maybe it's, something's been lost over time, we don't really, we think we know, but we don't really.
Yeah.
I am incredibly thankful though for Roseanne's experience and her commentary. To be honest with you, I appreciate you very much, Roseanne.
And I think that's what makes Eastline though, is that people do volunteer and give of themselves. You know what I mean? That's why I look here.
We are relationship-based, yes.
You know, it really is.
So this isn't worthwhile, but I think, but we do have a duty to account to the taxpayers. And it would be important just to be more knowledgeable, this board. And so, your question, both of your thoughts and everyone here. So we'll, maybe we'll try to do better on that.
Okay.
I, I think one thing we could do, just as an aside, is ask every year for their nine ninety.
Okay.
Right, they have to report, they're, most of these are not-for-profits. So that's a public document, we could ask for.
That's a good, that's a good idea right there.
That's perfect.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, there's something to look at.
And I, I know you, you know, a couple at a time, I think it would be best if we got a report from all of them, you know, at a, at a specific time. That way, there's a deadline for the reporting.
Yeah, the procedure that we were talking about.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Those are great ideas.
Yeah.
So we'll revisit that at some point and come up with something good on the agenda, we can talk more about it.
Well, at this point, as we are, this is of concern. And as these are two new requests this year, I would move to review, to re, to remove nine three four and nine three five from the budget request.
Wait, I couldn't hear, to, to remove or review?
To remove.
Remove, okay, whatever.
Nine three four and nine three five and, and then we can follow up that as we're reviewing the policy that they could reapply next year.
Do I hear, do I hear a second?
I would, I would rather not approach that this year, right now. Just, I know about the cadets, you're going to have somebody training them, the cadets are used a lot during the, the Eastline Week and stuff like that, as far as helping out the policemen, you know, just with traffic and foot control. Youth Coalition Scholarship, I'm not familiar with it, but.
Says it was originally in the Youth and Family Services budget and was removed and placed in the Services to the Community budget, so.
Yeah, I mean, if we're having discussion, are we having discussion on it? Can I speak to it or are we, just want to make sure because it's on the table and we have.
There's no second.
Okay, okay, I just want to make sure on procedure here.
If we got a second, then we can, we can discuss, if not, it'll fall.
Sure, sure. I mean, I think that Anne prompted a really great question. And it prompted discussion and then, you know, kind of moving forward, I have no interest in taking either of the, anything out, to be honest with you. The two that were specifically spoken to was nine thirty-four and nine thirty-five. I think that they're both great and worthy of the investment. But I would like to move forward with creating some sort of policy and procedure to how we do this here. But I am not in favor of taking them.
Okay, so you're still looking for a second?
Yeah, I'm looking for a second.
All right, so I'll second, just so we can have the discussion then, okay?
Okay. So, we have a discussion whether or not, so, any other comments or whether or not we should drop the youth pollution and the Eastline Police Cadets? Do we need any further discussion?
On the basis that this is, this is being reviewed in this year's budget and that this would be reconsidered next year, as soon as we set up another procedure.
All right, any further discussion? All right, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
In favor of, in favor of striking the nine thirty-four and nine thirty-five? Are those opposed?
Aye.
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 All right, motion doesn't carry.
Abstaining.
You're abstaining, all right. It doesn't carry. But we will try to come up with a procedure and look at it, work for it next year.
So now, is the pollinator pathways on here?
No, it's up there. It is in there, correct.
It's in the budget, but not on, it, it got chopped off.
Okay.
It's in there.
Can I just, the pollinator pathways is in the budget.
It's in the budget.
Is in the budget, yes.
Right.
Okay, correct, yep, yep, I just wanted everyone to be known that it was there.
Thank you for clarifying.
Okay.
All right, zoning commission, one sixteen. Any, any concerns on that budget? Any comments? Pretty straightforward. We'll move on to planning. Is that similar? One seventeen, planning department? Any adjustments? All right, we'll move on to one eighteen, finance.
I just had a question on this one.
On finance?
Yeah, just on maintenance of office equipment. It, it just seems like it went up a huge amount. I mean, it almost doubled. And I'm just, I guess, would you know about that, Kevin?
I, I would, I would know about that.
Would you know about?
I'm trying to pull it up.
Could you enlighten me?
Um, all the, all the beans we're counting in the office.
Yeah, I know, I'm, I just, the number just kind of sticker shot.
So we have three accounting syst, well, three systems in the finance office. We have Nova Time, which is our time and attendance, clock in, clock out. MCSJ, which is our current accounting software. And then we have Munis, which we are implementing, we've been implementing for six years. But we're going to push it through July one twenty-four.
It took a long time with the Board of Ed too, just so you know.
They what?
It took a long time with the Board of Ed.
Yeah, we're rolling out the same, yeah. So, the Munis invoice for one year is a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. So there's a proposal to split it between the town, Board of Ed, and water and sewer. So the, the town side's roughly sixty thousand, Board of Ed's sixty thousand, water and sewer twenty-three, twenty-four thousand, give or take. These are all projected based on historical increases, so I'm, I'm hoping, you know, I put sixty thousand in for our budget for this.
But it's reflected on each budget, each, each budget, not much?
Correct, correct, yep, so.
I just wanted to say that, because it's not on the town building one.
That we just talked about.
Go ahead.
Okay, so Munis is sixty thousand dollars, MCSJ is thirty thousand dollars, and then Nova Time is twenty-six thousand. So combined, it's a hundred and six thousand dollars between the three of them.
This is just maintenance or is this licensing too?
That name is wrong, maintenance of office equipment. We don't maintain anything in our office, this is software, software.
Software.
Software licensing.
Licensing.
Yeah, this licensing for our three, three.
Okay, all right.
Shouldn't it be under tech then, IT? It shouldn't be?
Maybe, what I've, what I've found is those, those, those bills, they come to me, I'll send them to IT. IT will then send them back to finance to pay. It's just easier, if I get the bill, write the PO on it and send it to.
Yeah, because I'm thinking maintenance, I mean, like, I guess it's just a misnomer.
That's an awfully expensive printer.
It's just a misnomer, okay, you got it.
So that's mislabeled. When we roll out with Munis, that'll be, that'll be relabeled, you know, software and licensing.
That should be IT though.
It what?
That should be IT though.
Yeah, but it's.
Yeah, probably should be.
Under one pot, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
We good with that?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, good. All right, contingency, well, I think we discussed that last night quite a bit. So, we close over here, we, LPEB, we, I think we, we talked about that last night. Any concerns or changes? We're trying to do a little better every year with that. Board of Finance?
Their audit services went up a lot, it looks like, that's just.
So with COVID, all the audits went up roughly, I think fifty percent. So our, we, we signed, you know, we had an agreement with our audit firm for sixty-five thousand dollars in the prior year, total. Our, our audit partner retired. A month later, the new audit partner said, the fee's now eighty thousand. And I said, well, I just got a letter last month saying it was sixty. She goes, the fee's now eighty thousand. So, and, you know, I shopped around a little bit and no one would even touch it.
That's why you take it or leave it.
Yeah.
Got it.
So it's a really.
Are these increases a recovery increase? Or do you think that they can, the towns can swallow it or the businesses can swallow it and that's what it is?
Speaking from the audit, so I, I was, I was an auditor before I worked for municipalities. There's only a handful of accounting firms that do municipal audits. They're, they're pretty robust, they're, they take a lot of time. And of the, the four, five, you know, audit firms that do them in the state, their, the staffing levels are all, their, their staffing's behind. They don't have enough people to do the audits they have. So they, they have no appetite to take on more work, really. So if they want, if you want, you know, if, if we want to retain their services, they say, here's the price. So it's.
Sure. I'd say this is pretty standard because auditing fees that we, or firms that we've had in the past, it's the same story going back thirty years, but it's not cost-effective for many of them.
Correct.
Unless they have a real interest in the community, which we were fortunate, some of our earlier ones did, but these are really.
It's all regional.
So we basically get a flat fee then, it's not like an hourly?
Correct, it's a flat fee. I think it's, it's over eighty thousand, I think it's eighty-two thousand. Water and sewer pay, I can't think of that, but twelve thousand, thirteen thousand. And then the Board of Ed also pays a piece.
But hours, it's time intensive.
They budget like two thousand hours on this project.
Yeah.
They budget like.
You can't get around it, I mean, people.
You have to do it, yeah.
You can't automate it, hey, I won't do it.
Not yet, right?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, we good with that one?
Yes.
Board of Assessment and Appeals. All right.
Too much.
We good?
Yeah, very.
All right.
This is our Board of Appeals.
Appeals, another one. We good on that? Inland Wetlands, okay, one thirty-two. Why'd they put down?
I know, I was just, it's good, but.
Yeah, but why?
Yeah.
The, the, the cut to the intern position.
Ah, okay, got it, great, so we're good.
No, it's good. Brookside Farm.
Just one, there's also the Waterford Shellfish Commission. We keep one dollar, we keep one dollar in there just to hold the account open.
Yeah. Want to buy that?
Yeah, it's.
It's just like one.
Waterford.
Oh, okay.
I don't even know if I printed it.
I might not.
Maybe you didn't get it.
Okay.
Here, can you look?
Are we talking about the Waterford?
Yeah, I really want to study that one.
The Waterford Eastline Shellfish Commission.
I got it.
Yeah, you got it.
It's about one dollar.
Yeah, we're good, okay.
Okay. Placeholder, okay, so now, Brookside Farm. Landscaping maintenance went up a little bit.
The landscaping maintenance, is that going to encompass the roof? Isn't that the one that needs a roof?
Well, yeah, that's just the landscaping, but that's.
Yeah, but isn't, are we helping pay for that roof?
Well, that would be in the capital.
So it's going to be in the capital?
Yeah, that would be in the capital plan.
Yeah.
Inside and outside, okay, so we good with this?
The chair is here, if we'd like any additional comment.
Do we, did you want to comment on Brookside Farm?
Or you want to comment on Samuel Smith?
Samuel Smith is my house, Brookside is there.
Oh, okay.
I'm, I'm on, I'm on a learning curve, I'm a new president.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
All right.
I'm a learning curve and I'm here to.
Oh, it's nice to have you.
We're glad you're here.
Yeah, Town Building Committee, seven.
Harbor Management?
Harbor Management is zero because they, we have a Harvard Management Fund now.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
So there's nothing in the budget anymore.
Nothing in the budget, all right.
But we maintain that as a line item?
Not anymore. We maintained that twelve hundred dollars in twenty, in, in this current year, just in case there wasn't enough to cover, you know, some of the wages, it was really just a little contingency. But the funds, the funds holding, holding its own, so I think this year is a good year for them to be on their own two feet.
Will we still report this next year, will we keep that line item?
No, next year it'll be gone.
It'll be gone. You sure you don't want it gone? That's supposed to show income, no?
We can have separately report, so the Harbor Management has its own fund and now that does revenues and expenditures. So we can report that quarterly or something like that to the boards.
Conservation of Natural Resources, one thirty-eight.
Is that the Air Commission?
Anything there? Historic Properties. Eight hundred, all right. Public Safety Emergency Management, oh, there's one there, okay, two fourteen. Any, over this, any other, any concerns on it? I think it was pretty.
No, they did agree to it.
Yeah, yeah, but they did a great thing, you're right. Public Safety and Dispatch. The Police Department. We did have some discussions.
Yes. So on four twelve, I had asked instead of a full, if we could go to an eighty percent. And I also asked for number five seventeen, their training to be put back in.
Yeah, and there was a reason for that on the training, it was, we didn't have the extra person. In other words, it was, am I right on that, Kevin, on the training, why that went down?
I don't recall that when we were talking anywhere. I, I know and I understand why we're not funding the two police officers, we have other things and I agree with that. But the training is very important for our police department. So I'm, I'm hard pressed on it to, to decrease it.
So it's my understanding that the cost of the training, ammunition, tasers and all of that was, that's why it's decreased. That's why the training's decreased, because that would have been the training for the two police officers that were not hired. So that's, that's why the training went down.
I didn't hear them say that when we sat together the other night. My impression of that was it was ongoing training for all the police officers and to continue that. I didn't, my understanding is that it was not hinged, that extra amount wasn't hinged on those two police officers that we, that we did not take on. I could be wrong, do you?
That was my understanding, but what?
So the, the cuts that were made, let me just pull it up real quick. Let me shut, oh, this is off right home.
We're looking at five seventeen, right?
Yep, yep, let me just go through my notes real quick here. Yep, yep. Um, let me just go through my notes real quick here. Um, so the cuts that were made to the training budget, um, was, I believe, seventy-six hundred dollars and it was the two, um, tuitions for the academy, um, thirty-eight hundred dollars apiece. Um, so that, that was the only cut. The only cuts that were made to the police budget.
Okay, so the training is not being taken away from ongoing training.
For the new, the two new cuts.
So it was hinge, it was hinge on those two.
Correct, yep. Yep, so all the cuts that were made to the police budget, besides the, the, that part-time clerical to full-time, the rest of the cuts were only related to the hiring of those two police officers. So the cuts, correct, yep.
Alright.
Yeah.
Yep. In the, um, if you, uh, are, if you're looking at the police budget.
I am.
The second page.
Okay.
Um, the police, um, he has a little breakdown of what it costs for a new police officer. I think it's the, the.
Right here, okay.
So it's like thirteen thousand eight oh two per police officer.
Thirteen thousand, yeah.
Um, and so all those, we backed out of the lines, like the new taser, the body cam, things like that. So those are the only cuts that were made to the police department, where the new pieces of equipment.
It was tied to the.
Yeah, I just don't see, I don't see it dictated for training on that, on that page though, unless I'm missing.
So, what they're saying is, I see the academy tuition is thirty-eight hundred. So if you double that.
Oh, the tuition, maybe. I now see it, yeah. I see it, yeah. Alright. So the only thing that we're requesting, or I'm requesting rather, is four twelve instead of, um, they requested to go full-time, right? And you proposed twenty-seven, three twenty-eight, and I had asked for you to consider, um, adding up to an eighty percent. For that part-time clerical. And that really is to accommodate, um, it's, it's very busy.
And it gives them benefits also.
Yeah. Um, eighty percent gives them benefits. Well, wasn't the other position eighty, oh, because that was unaffiliated.
It was twenty-five hours.
Okay.
It was twenty-five hours before.
So. So that would trip it. So Kevin, if we did that, what would, that would, we would have benefits? What would the real cost be?
So currently, um, that position, uh, works twenty-four hours a week, um, on average. I'm just looking through her, her actuals. Um, if we went to, so if we want benefits, that, the third, the thirty hours is the threshold there for the benefits.
Okay, so twenty-eight hours per week is actually eighty percent.
So twenty hours, twenty-eight hours a week, um, would be thirty-three thousand five hundred, thirty-three, four eighty and change, but thirty-three, five hundred would, would suffice there for twenty-eight hours.
Okay, so it's still underneath the threshold.
Correct.
Yeah.
So is that, is that something you'd like to say? Uh, uh, that increase?
I truthfully would.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know how everybody else feels about it, but I do think that they, that department, um, needs a boost, um, for sure, and they have consistently been asking for that, and understandably, you know, we have other requirements, but it would be nice to raise that a bit. Okay.
So your proposal, so what would the increase be on?
Six thousand one tw- one seventy-two.
Six thousand one seventy-two.
Let me just double check. Yep.
In this line, four twelve. Now we keep us under the threshold?
That would keep us under, uh, the thirty-hour, full-time benefit position.
Okay, so, let's, uh, let's have some discussion about that. As everyone feel.
Does she need to make a motion?
Do you want me to make a motion?
We could, yes. Why don't we, why don't we make a motion? Candace, you wanna make a?
You wanna make it, or you want me to make it?
Make it.
I can make it, okay. I'll try. Alright, um, move in department, two sixteen, public safety, least department. Item four twelve, part-time clerical, to increase the amount from, uh, let's see, twenty-seven, three twenty-eight to thirty-three thousand five hundred dollars.
I'll second.
You have a second? Let's have some discussion.
What were, what were the number of hours then?
Do we go to twenty-eight? Do we be, can we go from tw- what was it, twenty-four hours, Kevin, up to twenty-eight?
Correct. Yeah.
So that'd give them a little more help over there. It would still keep us from, uh, being, uh, picking up benefits.
Sure, I mean, that, to my understanding, that's a one-person department. So there's one person that's really doing all of the work as far as the records, and it is not easy. It's time-consuming, and then when you add on the FOIs, um, it's just, it's, it's, they're drowning over there. It was my impression.
Okay.
Well, I know the person that works there pretty well, and, uh, it's four days a week. They're not working an average three days a week, and the pay's only twenty dollars. So, they're getting four days a week now. Thursday's the only day off. Um, I don't know how you get three as an average, it's not a big deal, but you're already at the eighty percent capacity now, so full-time. But, uh, she doesn't need benefits cause she's retired, stay deployed. But, uh, just wanna make sure the math's right and the numbers right. The job is swamped.
Alright, any, any further comment? From Sam?
No, I'm thinking.
I'm, I'm also thinking, um, pushing numbers around in my head. I would just, uh, put out there for the sake of discussion that my understanding of the budgeting process is if we, um, are gonna deviate from this and, and boost a certain value, another value should be lowered somewhere else in the budget. Um, I understand that that's kind of a philosophy and doesn't have to happen, but I would just keep in mind that if we do this for every, every item, we could, uh, we could damage the bottom line pretty quick.
That's, uh.
Yeah.
That's true too.
I, I was looking at training supplies just as, um, you know, one that's gone up substantially.
Where is that? What number?
Uh, sorry, three twenty-six.
Three twenty-six, okay, got it.
Um, so I, I don't know if we're looking to take money away from somewhere, if we're prioritizing stuff. I, I wouldn't. That's just off the top of my head and I would hate to monkey with, uh, Chief Finkelstein's, um, way of doing business, so. I guess what I'm saying is I don't know what I'm saying. I.
You're saying you're trying to find somebody else to take it?
No, I appreciate, I appreciate the comments, for sure. And this is what we're supposed to be doing, but I will say straight out, I have no interest in taking anything else out of the budget. Um, I think that the request that was made, so we've had twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty, uh, yeah, both twenty-twenty-four, so it's been twenty-seven thousand dollars and it went to twenty-six thousand dollars and stayed at twenty-six thousand dollars. Um, they've been asking for an increase to full-time to accommodate all of the work that's going on there. And mind you, you know, all of that work needs to be accurate. So when someone is looking for videotape and all of these different things, body cams, and I mean, I'm most certain that the chief could go through and delineate that information much better than me, which he has, and it's on, uh, a meeting minutes, which is great. Um, so my thought was, when the first selectman proposed, uh, twenty-seven to remain, basically, um, you know, if you can't get the full amount to help our police officers do their job and do it correctly and effectively and efficiently, um, go to eighty percent. So, I, I'm not looking at decreasing anything from the budget to accommodate that. I'm looking solely for, um, the increase to eighty percent. That's it.
Okay. Any other comments? Alright, well, let's put it to a vote. Alright, uh, those in favor, uh, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Those opposed? We have, no, we have one opposed. Alright, motion carries, we'll, we'll do the increase. So, uh, that will reflect four twelve. What's that?
Anne made the first.
Okay.
Alright, second.
And then Candace second.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let's just keep it.
And it was five one.
Got a lot going on over there.
Okay, you got, you have the numbers, right? The increase is sixty-one, seventy-two.
Yep, we, yep, yep, yep.
Alright, alright, so we can move on to, uh, public safety, United Fire Department. What's that?
Uh, we can go wherever you have there.
I think we, what do we have? I have two seventeen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Two seventeen.
Yeah, and, um, let's see. And then zero it out, cause we made some changes.
It's, uh, there's six.
Five thousand.
Six thousand.
Six thousand.
Five hundred dollars a month.
Missileings, yep. Alright, I already know about that.
Same for Flanders.
Same for Flanders. Yep, they've got six thousand. Okay, and then we go to the, uh, fire marshal. And that goes, uh, to.
Is marshal really only spelled with an L?
Yeah, I, I think so. Don't don't check me. I think there's two kind of marshals. There are the fire marshal, but if it's like a marshal for like, a different marshal to two L's. Like the Marshal Service, I think has two L's.
Okay.
Alright, so that goes to zero. And part-time, we still have, uh, some, we have other expenses in there.
So Dan, um.
Director goes over to.
So the, the two salary lines, the, I can, I can just, I've, I've spent so many, so much time with the two fire chiefs, uh, in the fire departments over the last couple of months.
Which one are we on? Sorry, what department?
Two twenty-four.
Oh, okay.
Fire marshal.
Thank you.
We, we moved the fire marshal and the deputy fire marshal salaries to the East Lime Fire Service, cause they're also gonna be wearing two hats. Uh, we maintained the deputy fire marshal, um, the, the part-time deputy fire marshals for twenty-three hundred dollars. That's if, um, the, the deputy fire marshal or the, the fire marshal are, are away and there's a investigation that has to occur, or, um, I believe they also bring in help for Celebrate East Lime and some of the big days to do all the inspections that morning. Uh, and then the other lines were there, were, were the fire marshal supply lines. We didn't wanna intermingle, um, the fire marshal supplies with the East Lime Fire Service supplies just yet, and we weren't quite sure how the budget was gonna work out, so we just wanted to retain some of the, the supplies money and, and things like that in that fire marshal budget. So we have, you know, dedicated money for that. Um, so with that, we've maintained the, the phone line, uh, the training for the two, uh, marshals, the uniforms for the two marshals, and uh, their miscellaneous supplies.
So the rest of these, the same?
Yep. So theirs, their, um, their wages and their clerical admin wages moved over to the East Lime Fire Service.
Hector, we're, we're gonna turn to that now. We'll go to the two twenty-five, the fire service.
Alright, so on this one.
Yeah.
I wanna move for department two twenty-five, public safety, East Lime Fire Service, um, to reduce line item three zero three, which is administrative assistant, by, what is the number I have? Thirteen thousand one hundred fifty-five dollars to total thirty-eight thousand seven hundred seventy-three dollars. So this basically would bring, um, the person to twenty-eight hours per week.
Anne, can you, can you repeat that cut again? Cause my numbers don't jive with yours. What was the cut? Thirteen one fifty-five?
Yeah, to thirty-eight thousand seven hundred seventy-three. Am I wrong on my numbers?
Um, it might be, just be off a bit. Hold on one sec.
It's line three oh three.
Line three oh three, under section two twenty-five.
Yeah, fifty-one, eight seventy.
Did I?
And what was the, what was the new number?
I hit thirty-eight, seven seventy-three, is that?
Yep. I just wanna make sure.
You're sure I did my math right?
So what is the, the difference is?
Stand by, everybody? I, uh, thirteen ninety-seven, it looks like. Uh, thirteen thousand ninety-seven dollars.
Oh, okay.
Not quite sure what the.
Then, alright, as amended then, so thirteen thousand ninety-seven dollars. So that brings it down to what then? To total?
That brings the total to thirty-eight, seven seventy-three.
Oh, okay, so I just had the one number wrong.
Yeah, I think that was wrong.
And then again, that's a twenty-eight hour position, and that would be under the threshold of thirty.
Correct.
Yeah.
That's right.
Okay, I'm seeing a theme, okay.
Yeah, you're getting the theme.
Yeah, I got it.
You, you made the motion?
I did.
Yeah, alright, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Do you have a second? Alright, so that gets us under the, uh, threshold, so we save on the, uh, benefits.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it still gives them, uh, an administrative assistant, part-time.
This is only a part-time position.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. And it's still an increase over twenty-twenty-four.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
So, alright, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright, the motion carries. That change carries. Alright, let's go to animal control. Now we s- we split with Waterford on this? Is that, uh, I saw a note here?
Yes.
Alright. Any, any further comment on the two twenty-six animal control? Being done, let's go to public works. We have a detailed presentation on public works and, uh, we wrangled a few things here and talked it over.
I can't remember why we moved the tree warden.
I think his salaries.
I think it went into his, it got rolled into his salary.
Yeah.
He does it, he's the.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's what happened.
Alright.
Yeah.
And we're still meeting the state requirement, because there's a requirement to have.
Oh, wow, look at that.
Right.
He, he was watching us on.
TV.
There's a tree warden.
So.
Tree warden, man, he's saying.
There's a straight, there's a state statute on it, that's what I should say.
That was amazing, wow.
I, I do have a, I guess, question, comment. Under two hundred services, it says two thirty-nine tree maintenance, and my notes, and I don't know if they're correct, I had, they spent thirty-five thousand dollars out of fifty thousand dollars. Am I? Did you hear me, Joe?
Yeah, I heard you.
Is, is that correct?
Is that from this year?
Is that, is that from this year? I, I, I just wrote that down. I'm not sure what it meant exactly, so that's what I'm trying to.
I thought it was from this, for this year.
Yeah, I mentioned that we are at about thirty-eight thousand already spent this year. Um, I had to move money out of, I mean, we have to, if we have bad trees, you have to take them down. So it comes out of road work. So, I had to move, transfer money from road recon, so.
Okay. Alright, I just didn't know, I had that written down and I was like.
The fifty should be adequate. I mean, working, someone had mentioned on this board, but working with ever, I think Candace had mentioned, but, you know, working with ever sort of, and they're a big help in taking down trees, but, um, forty thousand is gonna get us behind and it, I, I'll know that, I can't keep up with the forty thousand, but do what we have to do. So I'm proposing the fifty.
No.
No, I'm wrong, okay.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Sorry, just have notes, didn't know what it meant.
Yeah, no, that's what we asked.
What is this?
Any other concerns? I don't wanna rush.
Well, my only other question, just because of the, the weather, it's, we really haven't had that much snow. Are there any savings this year because of, like, not using as much salt and, like, plowing and that kind of stuff? Or is it just because now we have rain and there's a whole nother avalanche?
There are absolute will be savings. Storm overtime and, um, storm materi- well, the storm materials line, the board of selectmen and board of finance cut by a hundred thousand last year, so I wasn't gonna have enough salt to buy, but we got lucky. So, there wasn't, there's not gonna be really much of any savings in the current years of, uh, storm materials, but in, um, the storm overtime, I mean, we're at March sixth, I think, where we spent thirty, thirty-eight out of the seventy this year. So, but, you know, it also could be a bad year and it's a hundred thirty and then I can't make it up.
So if you don't spend, I always get confused.
It goes back.
It goes back to the general fund.
Yeah, at the end of the year, it, it, it sweeps to the, uh, general fund.
Okay. So that's why you're asking them for the seventy again, because?
You know, no.
That's more of the, that's more of the average. This, this was a month, I mean, any, of all those rains, if, if it was a little colder, we would've had a lot of snow. We, we, we had a lot of rain this winter.
Right, and you're better off to have the money and be ready for it versus not have it and then have to come back.
Or go into contingency.
Or to go into contingency.
Correct.
Yeah, that's right.
Yep.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff. Alright, oh, I'm sorry.
No, sorry, I'm good.
No, you're good?
Yep.
Anyone else? Alright. Commission on age.
This one was very confusing.
Yeah.
I don't know what happened in this one.
Well, I thought our meeting was today with them, so that's why I printed those out. That, that should be the numbers. If you wanna pass those out, I'll print them.
I mean, I wrote numbers in with my notes.
I H the M S.
I have here.
Okay, so these are updated.
Yeah.
They were all over the place.
No worries.
That's one, that's one, that's one packet.
That's one packet, oh.
There's only four.
There you go.
Oh, there's only four.
Can you share it on there?
Yeah, we can share. Yeah, we can share.
I have both.
All right.
Share it down.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, and it, it looks pretty much like these numbers reflect what we talked about, uh, when they were here.
So really, yeah, a lot of the questions revolved around the salaries. So, um, if you flip to the last page of that packet, it breaks down the salary numbers. It's a little hard to, to read.
This one here, there we go.
So that just ties back to all of the, um, the employees and the wages, projected wages.
Right, and I thank you for keeping the testing in, so you kept the test...
That was my last question.
Yeah, because we had, we did, we had a lot of conversation about it, it was really good, but it was kept in.
It was kept there, but I didn't put it in here because we haven't done that. Right, so see up here, the number is zero?
Oh, so we need to vote on putting it back in.
We need to vote on that, correct.
I see, I'm learning quickly.
So random testing, what, 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 I, I just remember we had a long discussion, but I don't remember what happened with it.
This was the most confusing one that we did.
Because we had the gentleman stand up too, and he said that he gets tested anyway, right?
That was the bus, yes, he's the current bus driver that had, um, that was here in support of the budget, and, um, he had come up and I asked him, uh, you know, what his thoughts were on it, and I also asked him, do you think that we should keep it in, uh, so that we're randomly testing? And he said, absolutely. So, um, you know, I do think that it should be there, and I do think that it should be happening. Um, and then we also, um, asked questions regarding how many incidents, has there been an actual incident where, you know, a bus driver is getting randomly tested and someone had missed an appointment, and she told us, no, that that had not. So, you know, um...
I think he said too, if I'm not mistaken, that, he said that he goes and does a test and then he goes right back to work.
Yes.
Because he was saying that they didn't have to do anything for a day.
Is to have a tester come in at the, the building, they randomly select people to go, they just go and do, doesn't come back?
But they're not gonna miss, like, a whole day of work or something?
No, no, no.
Yeah, okay, 'cause that was what I thought, that was the impression I got, okay, so...
And it really kinda came, yeah, it's such a minimal thing, but it's important.
Just to clarify, 'cause I'm the person in charge of that program.
Oh, perfect.
Yeah, so, they, they, um, anyone that has a CDL, for any employer, and that we have CDL drivers in town, has to be participate in a random drug program, uh, you're talking about senior bus drivers, right?
Yes.
There is a provision in the state that allows us to, certain, um, people, and the bus drivers fall into this because I believe the weight of the, um, bus and stuff like that, um, that you can put them in the program. They're not required to, because they're not CDL drivers, but you, employer is allowed to put them in that program. So it is our choice, we wanna put them in that program, they've always been. I had this discussion with Kathy Wilson a few years ago, and fairness to Kristen, she didn't really know much about it, and I said, this is the statute, you make the decision, you tell me. I need to know if you want them in or out, 'cause I run the program, I put them in the program. And, uh, we have, um, we do have, we pay for a company that comes in, they actually do it at the field service building, 'cause that's where most of our drivers are. And if we keep them in there, their name comes up, they would have to report there, and then they do the random sample, I get the, I get the information, and we keep it that way, so that's the program.
She explained it wasn't a requirement now.
What's that?
She explained to us it wasn't a requirement for their F driver.
Well, it's, it's never been required, but, because they don't have a CDL, but the town has the right by a state, I have the statute, I don't have it in front of me.
You feel good as a...
Yeah, I'm very comfortable, that we have the right to do, we're not, like, violating any, any, um, of their rights or anything by doing that, because of the, because of what they drive.
Now, the other question I was gonna have though is, you know, if there's an accident, I think they're required by law to have a drug test, right?
CDL drivers are, um, and I believe that, um, they, they will as well, because they're driving the senior. But, um, there are provisions that if they get an accident, I believe it's if the car, if the vehicle gets, if the vehicle has, if any of the vehicles at the site gets, have to get towed, or if someone dies, um, they have, they have to. And sometimes we would like to do it to protect our driver as well and send him. So, but, yeah, there are provisions, we have to follow those provisions, and this is all, this whole program is, um, is, uh, is designated by the federal motor carrier, so it is a federal program.
It has been fast practice for them to be tested.
Oh, it, it, they've absolutely been on the, since I've been here, they were, they were always on the list, but they came, they came off the list about a year and a half ago, and I just needed to know, are they on the list or not? That's, that's the call, so, and I heard that conversation.
What are they being tested for specifically, what drugs?
What's that?
What drugs are being tested for?
All kinds of, definitely marijuana, cocaine, all the, I mean, there's a list of things that they're being tested for.
Yeah, but I think marijuana stays in your system for like a week, doesn't it, or something?
Uh, I believe it's two to three days.
Oh, is it driving?
Uh, oh, no, I'm sorry.
I thought it was a little longer.
No, no, cocaine and other stuff is, yeah, marijuana's in there much longer, but that...
April, this is a four hundred dollar item a year.
Yeah, that's true.
So do we have to make a motion, or is it already?
Well, I'm, I'm confused, so that we have, uh, there was my proposed, let's look at this.
Yeah, let's look at this.
And now we have on, on the latest printout, it's board, board of selectmen proposed.
So it's in there?
But we need, do we have to make a motion on each one of these changes, uh, from the...
I'm trying to, um, break this down, ten seconds, keep the line. This is, this is what you proposed, then, no, right?
This is what the board of selectmen, I proposed, these. So we're making some, they're a little bit different.
Oh, I understand, all right.
I think what we did, we wrote down...
If we do it, I'm gonna have to, okay, go through each of them, can I hang on to this then, if I wanna do it?
Yeah, yeah. What items are in discussion?
So, I, I guess, the only other thing...
So what kind of act we asked them with all their, who's like, from their notes?
I think the only thing was the bus driver, that, the, the amount of hours, I thought that we had an issue on that. That they had four part-time drivers, and then they were adding more hours in or something, and it seemed like it was, I have sixty-eight point five hours, which seemed like an inordinate amount of hours. But I don't remember the conversation, let me see.
What line item were you on, Ann?
Oh, sorry, um, two thirteen, bus driver one.
Oh, that's what she's talking about right now. So, it went from twenty-eight to sixty-eight, and that was to accommodate what you're speaking to, which is what, full-time?
I don't know, I don't have anything written, I don't have any narrative, so I'm not quite sure, but I just remember it seemed like it was in an order... But you have the narrative, okay.
Well, it is behind, which, which line are you looking at?
I'm looking at the bus driver, but I thought there was some...
Two thirteen.
Two thirteen, right here.
Four part-time drivers. I'm having a full-time driver, I have three levels.
So is that the...
Kind of typo?
Got it. Is that it then?
All right, there was, there was about ten variations of this.
Yes.
Yeah, that, well, that...
There was.
Do I want that back?
Well, this is what I have here, so it ties up to the three oh five, eight fifteen. So I think we do need to, I don't know if, how you wanna tackle this, but we just make all these changes.
Okay, so I need to make a motion on each one, I think, if, if it's different from what Dan proposed, correct? Technically?
Technically, I think it's accurate, yeah.
Unless you do the whole budget as a whole, can you say the changes as proposed? I'm not exactly sure that, that these are individual ones, I, I'm not su, I don't know about that.
No, I think that it needs to go individual, by, by line.
Is this one correct?
No.
This matches this, three oh five, eight fifteen.
Okay, so I think we have to use each line.
All right, hang on, I need to see it.
Kevin, do you have any notes as to the increase on the driver level, sixty-eight?
I do.
Thanks.
Four part-time drivers.
Okay.
So it, it went from having a full-time driver with a complement of part-timers to strictly, um, part ti, uh, to all part-timers. Just open it up here.
So all part-timers, no benefits?
Correct.
And they're all on that same line item?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Two thirteen.
Correct.
Okay.
So...
Okay, so this is everything I have to...
So now, but I see where the problem is, because there's on the worksheet, the new worksheet, which we've got, it's four part-time drivers, and it's, it's decreasing by, is it decreasing by forty-five thousand?
No.
You see what it is at?
So this is, um, so I apologize for the numerous spreadsheets that have been passed around, um, but really, the, the new, the new numbers that are on the screen and the, the handouts you see there are the, the final numbers. These numbers are what, are, everything's tied out to. So when, when, you know, to give everyone a level of comfort of where we're tying out the wages, we tie it out by the person, um, to the dollar amount, right? So originally, the original request is one eighty-nine, nine seventy-nine. Um, the, the commission on aging counselor was cut in half, 'cause half is funded with that senior son Arpa money that was approved a couple of weeks ago. The, the part-time admin is gonna be funded using the Tambori money. Um, so those came out, so that was where the reductions were. Right, so the, so there's really no staffing reductions. This person's still a full-timer, this part-timer's still saying, this is paying from a grant, and this is also being half paid from a grant. So that's, that's whole.
All right, can you go back to the Tambori fund?
Okay.
What, uh, could you say that part again?
The, the proposal is for the part-time admin that was added midway through this year, um, to be paid for next year with proceeds from the Tambori estate.
And I would have to oppose that.
Okay.
Because that fund was donated for senior programs, not to fund personnel, but the town should be paid for. So, but I'm very familiar with the, uh, the, uh, protocol to be colla, followed for that fund, and I think that that would not be proper use of that money. And I've also discussed this with the, um, the department head, who was not department head at the time that fund was created, donated all by private, private money. So I would be very, I, I think that that could cause some problems, because it's clearly not meant to pay personnel.
So, Roseanne, I appreciate, I am so thankful for her knowledge, honestly, you are so great, Roseanne. Um, may I ask you, um, and I'm, I'm so glad that you brought it up, is it written somewhere? Is it delineated somewhere when this money was...
The Tambori fund?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
It is, oh, good, well, I appreciate that.
It is under the, um, uh, it's part of the commission on aging, the, the, um, donated funds that they would have, this special account called the Perahouse Fund, uh, which was, um, donated from the, um, the, what should I say, last will and testament of Nicholas Perahouse, who was the originator of getting the, um, community center established at the, uh, community bell, building, to get the senior citizen center there. So the proceeds from his will were donated and set up in the Perahouse account, which is not a fund that we as town can access. That is private money donated specifically to the commission on aging, and the Tambori fund is the same thing. And that has only been in effect, I think that this would be the second year. And so the specifications of how that money is to be used are very clear.
Understood, thank you.
So what changes if we weren't to use that money, where would that, where would we change our, our budget? Which line item would that affect?
So I will check with the, the town attorney, but, um, from, from what I was told about the Tambori money, it was set aside for the senior center, for use of the senior center, including wages. Now, the Nicholas Perahouse account, that fund has other stipulations.
Yes, it does.
But the Tambori fund, um, there's no fund yet, set up for Tambori's funds that were donated. So I, I'll, I'll check with the town attorney on that one.
So we're gonna hold off on that, just until we get...
All right, can we put it, can we, all right, um, I, I just won't vote for it then, because I, it's a matter of conscience for me.
Well, I mean, is it possible to get clar, is it possible to get clarification? Because I wouldn't wanna vote on something if, if it's gonna not be right, like, if it's not right.
I was trying to read her last will and testament, but, um, but seventeen pages.
So could we, all right, could we put the money in the budget, under our budget, and if we can use the Tambori fund, then...
We can add it to salary contingency.
Yes, would that be a simple way to do it in order to move this forward?
Yeah, and then it would have to go before the, you know, on July first, we'd go before the boards and ask for a transfer.
Yes.
If that, if that's...
And then we wouldn't be doing anything wrong.
We have to...
Correct.
Okay, I'm, I'm good with that.
Correct, okay, why don't we do that then?
Do you wanna table this, it looks like we're gonna have to call a special meeting to...
To finish this.
To finish the budget.
Well, my suggestion was, put it in the, in the budget, is coming from this fu, is coming from, all right, we put it in the budget, and then if we can use the Tambori fund, we can just put that into our, we can add it into our account.
Put on the phone.
Yeah, I'm at it.
Say it again.
In other words, put it in here in order to get the budget passed, and then if we can use the Tambori money, then we can put that into the general fund. Is it, is it donation?
But this contemplates using the Tambori money, is that right?
To the salary.
So, um, what Mrs. Hardy's saying is, instead of touching that line in the commission on aging budget, we just add the twenty-seven thousand dollars that we removed, um, put it in the salary contingency, the twenty-seven thousand, and then I'll talk to the town attorney tomorrow, get a legal opinion, present that to you guys, and we can, you know, go from there.
So will we still stay with these line items as they're printed on this?
I, I think we'd stay there, but we would just add twenty-seven...
Because it doesn't specifically say here that that is where the money's coming from.
Okay.
Correct, yeah, it's just, yeah, exactly, so we can add twenty, twenty-seven, seven fifty-five to salary contingency.
Well, the other option is this, what if, I don't think we're gonna finish tonight, we're gonna have to have a special meeting. So between now and that special meeting, we find out exactly the use of the Tambori fund, and then, then we can actually do it properly.
Mind I, mind I ask if we could hear from the chair of the commission, who was here tonight? Mr. Beckage?
Oh.
Who is, who is familiar with that fund?
Yes, please.
May I ask for his input?
Yes. Could you go there, here, if you wanna address the, the board, that'd be great.
Welcome.
And that, that by itself for the record.
My name is Michael Beckage, I'm the chairman of the, um, the commission on aging. Shows you, shows you my, that aging issue. But anyway, um, I appreciate the, the chance to speak to you. On the Tamb, Tambori fund, I think, yes, we, we need to do an analysis, going back to make sure that that was, uh, that's an acceptable practice. I'm gonna come from more from the moral side, if you will, of the process, because quite frankly, somebody's last will and testament, they leave money to the association. We received a letter from the, the commission, or one of the members of, uh, the office received a, a letter from the, um, Tambori Fund family members, and, um, they had put in there very clearly, um, that it was, they sent their letter to the program person. They were accept, they were, their thinking, as most my thinking, is this money will be used for, for, um, for programs, rather than to be spent to lower the taxes. That was my impression, that was the impression of the person I, that sent the letter to us. I certainly, uh, understand that we need to take a look at the last, her last will and testament, to see if there is out there, but I think from an emotional standpoint, I would like to see, or from a moral, ethical standpoint, I think somebody went their whole life, they do their last will and testament, they're giving it to the commission, not to be used for that purpose. They want, you know, if, if, if somebody asked me what a good use for that fund was, if we were, she was a yoga instructor for the town, for many years, if we turned around and we say we made the yoga program free for X amount of years in her name, and we did that, I think that's the, that's the type of honor that I think it should go to, not to be spent from the day-to-day, you know, funds going forward, um, from operations. I, I don't think that was the, the intent, I think, of the giving. My concern with this is that we have other people down the line that maybe, may also give us money, and if they see it spent this way, that, that may just stop that. And I, I personally don't wanna see that, I think it's for the good of the community, if we make it a program issue rather than a tax issue, from that side. I didn't realize you were going through this, I was here for another, uh, meeting tonight, I, downstairs, but, um, there's one other issue, if I can address it, well, I'm up here. Jennifer, you are, I'm not quite sure how the money was, was transferred, was, uh, put together in the budget that was up on the screen, 'cause I didn't, can't see that right now. But our understanding is when Jennifer was hired, that Jennifer was, was going to be split between youth and family services and the senior center, which means half her salary would come there. Well, the first half... Well, the first half of the year, the money is coming from the, from the ARPA money, which basically covers the first half of the year, so it's not an issue. The second half of the year, only half of that money, only half of her salary should be going against the senior. Not the whole, but not the whole year. The other half should go to you, and I'm not sure if that was the way it was broken out here, because I just came in late and saw different numbers. But that, as I saw, would probably lower that amount, and that money could be used to pay our receptionist, or part of the receptionist, which should be there. I'm also sorry, there is, there has been an attempt to have a meeting, a number of meetings, which have been canceled. Now there's one 3:00 tomorrow, which I kind of, this, this meeting throws me, because I thought we were going to have that meeting prior to this budget.
That was the intent.
Okay. We were supposed to have, my understanding, we're going to have it Monday, then we're going to have it today, then now it's tomorrow. And quite frankly, on a personal basis, I've had a canceled number of outside engagements, I had to try to make these meetings, and they've all been canceled last second. But on the second half of the budget, from the 215, and the 200, and the 300 series, it looks like somebody just, I don't know if it's been changed since, but it looked like it's just been pasted over from last year. There were a number of items we went through, and I'm not sure what they are, so I'd be happy if I could see the budget that's up there. I would make a comment on them on behalf of the, of our, the senior, it's up to you, if you want to just hold it off and we could discuss those later. Or possibly tomorrow, they could be resolved in a, in a meeting. I don't know how you'd like to handle them.
Yeah, I think what we're going to have to do is, we're not going to be able to approve the budget tonight, it's evident. So we'll have a special meeting to approve the budget, that'll give us time to meet tomorrow.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, so you can, you know, inform us of all the things you feel necessary that we know, and we can really work out these numbers.
Yeah, there was, of the last 12 items, there was a cut and paste on nine of them. And we even lowered some of those items, and they were, they were in wrong, so that's why we want to, we want to fix that.
In a matter of logistics, how would we go about scheduling the special session, or special meeting? Do you need a motion right now with specific details of when that meeting would be?
No, we'll, we'll, we'll talk afterwards when we're all available, and we'll, we'll, we'll just notice.
We should go and table this for now.
Yes.
Yeah, I think we should table this for now.
We have five minutes, five minutes before the time meeting begins to.
Yeah, so I think what we should do is, we got through 418, and, you know, maybe we have a regular Board of Selectmen meeting, if that goes quickly.
We could.
We could add an agenda item, get to everything else, and then that's all that we'll have left.
Before you go.
Does that make sense?
I just want to thank you so much, for, I know that that was kind of improbable, you came up, and it was very impactful, the comments that you made. It, it really, I think, impressed on some, but definitely for me.
Yeah, well, we.
And when you speak to morals, I have a moral meter, my friend, so when I go to bed at night, I want to keep my head on the, on the pillow.
I appreciate your comments, and I thank the, the board to at least hear me for a moment tonight.
Oh, no.
And hopefully tomorrow's 3:00 meeting will resolve the issues we have and go on.
Yeah, no, I was concerned, I'm sorry. No, I was concerned that we had a meeting tomorrow, and I was saying, you know, without your input, it wouldn't be right to, you know, we're trying to get this approved tonight, but you know what? We got to take a step back, and we'll, we'll try to do everything else, so then we can meet with you tomorrow, Kevin and I, and you come in, we have a meeting scheduled. And then what we'll do is, we'll schedule a special meeting, the only thing on the agenda, be it approve the budget.
I appreciate you.
Of course. And I apologize for, there was some snafus with the scheduling, and I know that you went out of your way to attend a meeting that.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I think, at this point, I think we should adjourn. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do I hear a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, is?
655.